I'm going to call this meeting of the schools committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged, lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in the school.
A grateful audience to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Oral communications, if there's anybody here who'd like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Seeing not, we'll move on to our recognitions. We're very pleased this evening to have the members of the Gloucester High School football team and the coach who have received recognitions from the Northeast Conference. And we're, once again, we did this for the soccer and field hockey two weeks ago, and this is getting to be very, very exciting for us, usually we don't see so many smiling faces. And I'll hand it over to our athletic director, right?
Thank you very much, again, school committee, Dr. Sapphire. It was a great opportunity to recognize our student athletes. Two weeks ago, as they said, we had all of our other Fall of Athletes that were honored with all-conference, all-league awards, but at that time, football was still going strong and just the All-Stars hadn't been made yet, so now we're glad to get these hard-working guys and get to honor and recognize them for a great season. First thing I want to say is, as everyone knows, it was my first Fall as the Athletic Director, and I did play some high school football, but I got a whole new appreciation for the football team and program. They are the first ones to start in August and they're the last ones to finish. It's a very long season. When you only play once a week, there's a lot of preparation and practice and hard work that these guys, as well as all their other teammates, Coach Tony Zerilli and his staff put in that really it opened my eyes to a lot and I appreciate what they did. So, we'll get started right away. What I'll do is I'll introduce one player at a time real quickly. Dr. Sapphire has a citation on behalf of the school committee in the city about honoring them, and we've got to look at that. He's greeted by the school committee. The first individual is a Northeastern Conference All-Star. He unfortunately is not here tonight with us because he is also a captain of the wrestling team, so he's committed to that team. They have their second match in hand over tonight. But Ryan Argentino was an NEC All-Star. As I mentioned, he is a captain of the wrestling and lacrosse team. Was a very key component, had a big injury partway through the season, but was still there for his team the entire time. So, when you do see Ryan, obviously congratulate him on a tremendous season and football career at Gloucester High School. Next, another NEC All-Star, James Nelson. I'm sure if James is here, James also, multi-sport athlete, currently with the basketball team, handle lacrosse player, was a quarterback and played some defensive back. Unfortunately, it was an injury-riddled season as the season went on, so he jumped in and played some defensive back as well. James had a tremendous season for his senior year. Then, after that, it was quite an accomplishment that we had a large contingent of NEC All-Conference players, which is the highest award basically for individuals in the league. First, Nick Allen. Nick is a senior, he's a two-way lineman. He was one of those players that I really gained an appreciation for. People always think of Gloucester football as some big, early guys that we've had for many generations. Nick is obviously not one of the biggest guys, but his toughness and his ability to play the offense and the defensive line was impressive. He was also honored as one of the MSL More Sports Online New Players of the Week, which is well-deserved, so great job, Nick. Next is Noah Benson. Noah is one of our captains this year. He also is a two-way lineman, so he's one of the guys that doesn't get a lot of line light, really works hard for the entire season, one of the most respectful guys. This entire group here, I didn't know many of them coming in, but now seeing them in the hallway, it's a great group of young men, and Noah is one of the most fine young men, very polite, cordial to everyone that he sees, and it's been a great honor to see him work so hard. Joe Shimataro. Now, Joe also a two-way lineman, and he is one of the few that looks like a lineman. Joe is one of the leaders, a captain of the team. Joe, I believe, was also captain of the indoor and outdoor track team, so he's a very busy man throughout the year. Had an injury early on as well, and overcame that pretty quickly, and like I said, was one of the leaders on and off the field for these guys, so great job, Joe. Nick is another senior. I didn't mention this before, but these are all seniors this year. This is a very senior leading class, and these guys led by example. Nick was a starting cornerback, also saw a part of a bit of action as a running back. And to be honest, Nick and other fine young gentlemen, after getting to know him and everything, but I think this was probably one of the biggest spark plugs on the team. This was someone I would watch the games, that when he would make a big play, it really picked the entire team up and was a leader on the field that guys really appreciated and great job, Nick. Jeff Lotonge. Jeff is another one of these hard-working, two-way linemen, another one that's not one of the biggest, most intimidating, but his abilities on the field and his ability to make adjustments, because he also had to become a linebacker partway through the season due to a lot of the injuries, was someone that they really relied on a lot. Jeff also was honored with one of the MSL New Players of the Week award as well for his hard work. It's a great job, and I know he's also a lacrosse player, so we look forward to him in the lacrosse season, leading the way. Jan Pena Ortiz. First off, Jan was honored with the York Eastern Conference MVP, Leader of the Year award, so that was quite a prestigious honor that he was Player of the Year for the entire conference, and is well-deserved, not only this year, but his career. He goes down right now as the second all-time leading rusher for Gloucester High School football, which is quite a history that we know. Also has the individual last year Thanksgiving game for the most rushing yards in one game, so it's been quite a career, and it's been an honor for, obviously, not just myself, but everyone in the Gloucester community to watch him. Again, he was another one of the MSL New Players of the Week throughout the season, so great job, Jan. And the final player to honor tonight is Mark Smith. Mark is another one of our captains. Mark is another one of the perfect examples of a leader on and off the field. Mark was a running back, defensive back, he's on the field at all times. Mark was just recently named, and this is a very prestigious honor, as one of the Boston Globe All-Scholastic, so we will see that in the paper very soon. Very well-deserved, also an MSL New Player of the Week. He's a member of the National Honor Society, so when we say student athlete, Mark is the prototypical, perfect example of a great student athlete. On top of that, just to mention, with this entire group of seniors, I am starting to know, obviously, all of them on the field, but now off even more as well. This group here, every one of these seniors, this entire senior class, everyone carrying above an 80 average in the classroom, so there was no worries ever about these guys not having players on the field, and that's the great thing, like I said, a senior leading class that led on the field, off the field, was tremendous. Final individual I want to recognize is Coach Tony Zerilli. This year was eye-opening to me. I watched Coach Zerilli and his staff, the amount of work, time, and effort they put in. If it was just on the field, it would be like any other sport, but it's above and beyond with the amount of hours that they put in, whether at the school, working with the students, but then at home, and film, and preparation for the next game, scouting of other teams. It really is quite a process to see what he's done. He's at the school as much and more than any other coach of another sport, so he's very involved, not only for football, but for these guys in other sports, pushing them as multi-sport athletes, but also to be good students and become good young men and obviously help our community in the future. Just to really recognize how big of a year it was for him, number one, he was voted by the coaches in the Northeastern Conference as the Coach of the Year. He was also honored as the Boston Globe Division Four Coach of the Year. And the last one is even more prestigious, I feel like, because of such a larger range, is the Association of New England Football Officials Coach of the Year. So, when you've got the referees on your side too, that's always... Coach Tony, tremendous job this year. These guys, they worked hard, they deserve all the honors that they're getting now, and I look forward to watching these guys grow into young men. Obviously, some of them have more sports to succeed at, and they've lost a career before they move on, but a great group of guys. Thank you again to the school committee, Dr. Sapphire, everybody for the...
Thank you very much.
Before I put those, I just wanted to thank you all for everything you represent for Gloucester schools, both on the field and off the field. We have a terrific reputation in the region of being really good sports, and I had the pleasure of watching a lot of games, and it's nice to put faces outside of the helmets that I see coming around and making great plays on field. Football happens to be my favorite sport, so it's fun to watch you succeed both personally and as a team, really shows that you work together and kind of knew each other's strengths and really just did a great job, both on... Great job, Coach.
And I'd just like to say that we're all very, very proud of you because of your achievements as well as your sportsmanship, and Coach Zerilli, you've done a great job, and this is a testament to it, these are some successful players, so thank you.
Congratulations, Howard.
You're welcome to stay. So, we'll move on to our Student Advisory Council. We haven't seen you for days.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So, would you like to bring us up to date on what's happening at Gloucester High School?
So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Lily Benjoff. I'm the secretary, sorry, of the Student Council Executive Board and also a four-year member of the Class of 2019 Student Council. And so, yeah, so we had our Class of 2019 fundraiser on Ladies Night the other night downtown, if anyone stopped by. We had a little booth and we had a bunch of different members working in Santa costumes and festive music, so we raised about $341, so that was a big accomplishment. We also have the American Red Cross Blood Drive this Friday at the Gloucester High School Field House, and we have all 40 NHS members running it with the American Red Cross volunteers, and we have 55 slots filled out of the 63, which we're hoping to get all filled by the end of the week for our donors, both teachers and students. We also have a Christmas fundraiser coming up for our Class of 2019 as well. We're selling candy grams, which includes candy canes and Hershey Kisses, which will be delivered on Thursday, the 20th, so we're hoping to get a little bit of money going for the Class of 2019. Is that it? Yeah?
Can we send a candy gram?
Of course. We can figure out a way to have someone come next Wednesday and... Oh, this is... Yeah, so I can give you a contact email or something, and we can kind of work that out through there if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Great. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks for having me.
Begin tomorrow.
Of course.
Consent agenda ready? Any consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for further consideration?
I'm sure that we approved the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll tell you, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Why am I wrong here? Our deliberations on educational issues. The first one up is our budget goals, guidelines, and draft schedule for the FY 2020 budget.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. A number of our budget goals are consistent with the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and a couple are things that are just a little bit new, based upon contingencies as they arise. Beginning with curriculum review and revision, we maintain an annual cyclic review and revision of our curriculum. In particular, this year, we're going to be looking to procure and adopt a new K-5 science program. Our initial implementation was abbreviated due to budget concerns. There is a little bit of a difference amongst elementary teachers between the elementary level, K-2 rather, lower elementary, and 3-5. So, we have a science committee that is looking to pilot a number of programs, again, for grades 3-5, and we'll be looking to support them in the FY 20 budget. The high school continues to update, mostly in its science area because of the change in the science standards, so that's ongoing work. We have not yet received the budgets from our principals and department managers. Those are coming in, I believe, on December the 17th, but there may be budgetary implications there as well. At the elementary level, aside from the science piece, there'll be the annual review of scope and sequence in both literacy and math and focus, but I think we're in relatively stable shape as far as those are concerned. We have a brand-new coordinated program review coming up. They have changed their methods, rather than a six-year cycle with a midterm review. In the third year, they're now going to be coming almost every other year. They indicated that they'll be reviewing less information each time, but they'll be coming with much more frequency. So, we've been looking at our institutional self-evaluation, our discipline data, our curriculum review for bias and stereotyping. Greg Went and Patty, a director of special ed, went to a meeting a week or so ago, and the sense that you gave is that there'll be increased emphasis on civil rights this time around. So, we will begin our self-assessment, our self-evaluation at the end of December. Next read. English as a second language, our ESL kids, we continue to strive to maintain the appropriate student-teacher ratio to ensure that this complies with respect to the services that we provide and adequate amounts of time for instruction for English as a second language students. It is likely that O'Malley will require full-time instructional aid to assist with some e-health services. We will try to continue to sponsor sheltered English immersion classes for our teachers if the funding enables us to do so. I've reported here in the past that CVTE, our vocational and technical career, teachers now are also under obligation to take sheltered English immersion courses, and they're part of the first-year cohort, which has to have its certification in SEI by 2021. Technology, we have fulfilled the grade-level requirements, meaning that grades 8-12 this year now all have a one-to-one. We have just about completed what we feel we need for Chromebooks at the elementary and middle school levels as well. What we now need to begin to do is to establish a schedule for the replacement cycle. These machines have a lifespan, a support from Chromebook for about five years. I know that IT is looking at the possibility of leasing as opposed to purchasing, and we think that there will be savings in that, but we also have to think in terms of the replacement cycle as well as these things begin to age out. There are also, we can anticipate some infrastructure demands that IT feels are necessary in order to keep our internet at quite a high, very, very high level. They've done extraordinary work, so we'll see what they come up with as well. In the area of career vocational technical education, as you know, we do have the pilot program with Essex Tech and with the Construction and Craft Laborers Union Local 22. We do have some students that we anticipate will be participating, and we will get this off the ground in January. Where further support is going to be coming from following the pilot program this year is a question mark. We did not and still do not anticipate necessarily putting it into the budget, but it may be something that we might consider putting some funding aside for things like transportation or so on and so forth. The Essex Tech is looking at a couple of foundations to see if they can raise some money that way. There's been some dialogue with the Department of Ed, who are at this point reluctant to make any commitment whatsoever, but we'll at a minimum be faced with the question, where do we go from here once this pilot program is over at the end of June? It's also hopeful in conjunction with this that we'll be able to refurbish our CVTE classrooms. We've been talking with the Craftsmen's Union, we've been talking with Essex Tech, and our own vocational program. As summer approaches, I'm hoping that we'll have something in place that we can begin to clean those classrooms up and make them much more appealing for our students.
As you go through that process, I'm wondering if you could, you and whoever's involved, come up with some sort of wish list? Because I think we could advocate to the community for donations or something, like paint or something. I mean, I haven't seen the buildings in a while, which is why I asked for a tour after the new year, but I'm just thinking if you could do that, then maybe we as a committee can be proactive to look for donations, because from what I hear around the community, a lot of people want to help out, they just don't know what to do.
That'd be great.
So, if you could keep that in mind.
Terrific, thank you so much. Next Generation MCAS, of course, is one of our priorities. We want to maintain our district-wide efforts. With respect to strengthening performance on the Next Generation MCAS, the high school is coming online, so all grades 3-8 and grade 10 in 2019 will be computer-based testing. We're also in the process of developing a turnaround plan for Gloucester High School. As you know, and as we discussed, the accountability process has changed. There's a lot more light being shed on our lowest-performing students, and the high school is under obligation to develop a turnaround plan. There may be implications for the budget once that plan is both conceptualized and completed by the springtime. There'll be a consultant coming in sometime in the very near future, it's a day or day and a half, where they come in and do a survey and do some preliminary analysis as to the, you know, the state of the school with respect to MCAS. But one of the things that we apply for when we apply for a planning grant for $25,000 is to consider bringing a consultant to help us both with the planning and with the communication next year. The high school is still involved in the Northern Association of Schools and Colleges and the ASK, and they are developing its growth plan. Hopefully, a lot of that work is involved with looking at curriculum and making their modifications and adjustments. Whether or not there are budgetary implications coming out of the high school's proposed budget sometime next week remains to be seen, so we'll be looking for that. One of our ongoing efforts is individualized learning and individualized learning through interventions. We've done a very good job with literacy intervention at the elementary level in particular. We've tried to fill in with math as best we can. There's some work coming on at the middle school now with Momenta, formerly the Bay State Reading Institute, but as I'll mention when I speak about the Essex Community Learning Grant, the more that we can do to expand wherever possible our more individualized work with students who are not quite up to the challenge at a particular point in time is something that requires resources. Special education, we can, as always, anticipate special education costs going up by at least 3%. It is simply a reality that occurs, whether it's at a district placement or what have you. So, we will continue to see what we need to do in terms of the budget in order to meet the needs of our students on IEPs. At the same time, we'll be looking to streamline our processes and procedures, and if necessary, provide whatever cushion we can with contingency account, because as we know, families move into the district, students demonstrate the need for an alternative placement, and we have to be in a position to provide the requisite support. I mentioned the Essex Community Learning Collaborative. It has been discussed here at school committee. Greg and Patty Wegman have spent, Lynn Beatty and a number of others have spent an extensive amount of time developing a vision and looking at some challenges and developing action plans. I see their particular work being a strong part of the District Improvement Plan, which we'll be bringing before the school committee sometime in February. But they have come up with three fundamental challenges, not inconsistent with what I've already mentioned, but with a renewed focus on these things. One is in the area of interventions, having a fully articulated district-wide tiered system of supports, not only literacy and math, but also in terms of social-emotional learning as well. In an ideal world, we would hire as many staff members as is necessary to ensure that we are meeting the social-emotions needs of each and every student. And as we know, those issues have become increasingly more profound over the last five years or so. Challenge number two is a real sore point. It appears as though one-third of the students in this district are absent more than nine times in a school year, and we're starting to take a very close look at that. We have very grave concerns. To what extent is that due to a lack of student engagement? We've talked about project-based learning, we've talked about inquiry-order thinking and higher-order thinking and what we can do. We've talked about what is it that is causing children to miss that much school is quite a concern of ours. So, we'll be examining that. I don't know to what extent that does or does not play into budgetary needs, but it is something to keep on our radar. The aforementioned social-emotional support, I want to ensure that we can preserve the staff responsible for maintaining social-emotional services throughout the district as this issue becomes increasingly more extensive, and also raise ourselves for potential that reductions may be necessary, and in addition to minimizing loss of service, minimizing loss of options and electives and what it is that makes the Gloucester education as colorful and as much opportunity as it does for children. So, that's just a thumbnail outline of, you know, some of the potential budgetary priorities, certainly the priorities with potential budgetary ramifications, and obviously we can expound on that more when we present the budget the first time, usually the last week of February. If anybody wants more information prior to that, we can make that arrangement as well. Carrie, do you have a look at the calendar by any chance at your fingertips?
Let me see. I can get that in a second.
Yeah, they didn't put you on the spot. Yeah. That's all right.
While we're waiting, are there any questions or comments or concerns, things that we're neglecting?
I just want to support not losing any problematic opportunities at the high school level in particular. I mean, obviously, that's the one where it gets cut. I think the students have written about class sizes and they're not happy, and I think to the extent that we can make sure that there's a variety of things that kids can be taking advantage of.
There are so many different options. Of all the high schools that I've had some direct contact with, the amount of variety that Gloucester students have is extraordinary. The more options you have, the more you're exposed to, the more you're exposed to, the more there's a likelihood that you may find something that, A, you're interested in, B, that you're successful at. So, it really does tie into student well-being.
Did I just hear that you say students have written that they're not happy with the class sizes?
I haven't said that.
I haven't seen that.
There's an article in the Gilnet earlier in the year talking about class sizes.
And the students aren't happy with it?
Well, they mentioned that class sizes have gone up. They're aware of teachers...
I thought our classes were relatively small at the high schools.
I would love to review it. I did not see anything egregious when I reviewed it earlier, but I'm...
Can we get a report on class sizes? I'm interested to see that.
It's not that we did, but I can provide that way, I'm sure.
Yeah, because I had the impression that we weren't, we didn't have big class numbers at the high school, so I just wanted to confirm that.
Well, I think the other piece is that sometimes people want to get in classes and they can't, so they have to make tough choices on the schedule because class sizes are a fault.
Well, that's what we can see. I mean, is what, any cuts we've done over the past couple of years about the impact has been?
The classes that were dropped last year were classes that had low students. I mean, I can say that with confidence.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, go ahead and report.
Thank you.
Either the next program, something you need for the school committee.
At least sometime during the budget process.
Sure. One item that I should also mention, and Martha Jo Fleming, Director of Food Services, showed me a notice this morning from the Department of Health that the school department is not exempt from eliminating styrofoam going to compostable lunch pieces and items and so on. So that will be a budgetary issue. I mean, it's an appropriate issue, it's ecologically sound, and it will be a budgetary issue somewhere in the neighborhood of around $20,000 to $25,000.
Any other questions?
I got the calendar.
Okay, let's hear it.
Is there a question?
I assume that the cost of going to a compostable will be weighed against the potential for reusable, right?
Without dishwashers.
Do you need a dishwasher instead?
I'm just, I'm just.
No, we can do that.
If a reusable tree lasts 10 years, does that cover the cost of a dishwasher and staff personnel or this kind of thing?
Well, I would see entire district. So if it costs for the entire district $20,000 to $25,000, and you hire a dishwasher for one building at $20,000.
Oh, we should look at that.
We should look at that, actually.
We should look if we have room for dishwashers first.
Or if we have a dishwasher in the building.
This just brought to my mind something. I saw something on social media about composting, and a response from a parent was that school committee should really look into concerns of compostable trees, that there are concerns with them and they could carry some sort of germs or something. So I would like to be educated on compostable trees before we make a decision. I think the school committee as a whole, I think that should be part of the conversation when we're making a decision. If there are concerns, and school districts are bringing up other concerns, because I think a little bit out west, where this friend of mine lives, I think there was concerns with them. So I'd be interested to see if any community around here has had any problems with them or any reports of anything. I mean, I've never seen one in support of the whole idea of compostable trees, but if there's certain allergies that can come with them to sensitive students, I would want to make sure that we have that knowledge before we make any decision.
With the school committee's permission, I'd be glad to reach out to Karen Carroll from the Department of Public Health and have her report out or come and speak about that.
That'd be great. Also, with students who have super-sensitive allergies or something.
Well, I think they're in a good position to respond to that.
Thank you.
And then, it's probably not within the budget, but it's a financial thing where the city wants, we want to quantify what curricular needs or programs we may have around substance abuse or racial marijuana. So that's part of educational piece of that. Hopefully, that's something we can get funded through the post agreements.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the calendar.
The calendar.
Calendar, yes. The tenet of the budget calendar, pretty likely, the principals and department supervisors will prepare level service budgets, and they're doing that as we speak. That's due back to Dr. Saffar and myself, December 17th. We'll review those shortly thereafter. Then we'll hold a leadership team meeting on the budget, January 14th. After that, the B and F budget meetings will have three days, receiving proposals from the principals and department chair, department heads. And then superintendent is going to present to the school committee on February 27th. The school committee will review subsequent meetings in March, April, final vote for the mayor submission. And then, in May, the city council will review, and then the school committee will take a final vote, June 26th. So that pretty much lays out the calendar for the budget process.
Can we get that email to us?
Sure.
Any other questions on the budget goal on time line? And we'll move on to the superintendent's evaluation materials, which were sent out today electronically. And there are some hard copies if somebody wants a hard copy.
Yes.
We've all done this before, we know the process. The form has not changed.
I was supposed to get you that form that combines everything.
We can possibly concoct something as well on Google Doc, but it would mean you taking the Word document that you're working on, transferring your comments and such.
They just does it automatically, and they said I can get it, so I have to just request it.
Okay, just as a reminder, this is how Stephanie sent it out, and there is the end of year, there's a summative report document, which you've seen before, and it looks just like that. Okay, there it goes. Now, is that too small?
They'll have it.
We have it, we've seen it.
Okay, all right. As you know, the professional practice student learning goals and the three district improvement goals will come in, is really found in all of the other attachments. And the step one is really the last step after you've reviewed everything and you give the final assessment on those particular goals. The next, where it says standards one through four, is what you use to summarize the rest of this particular document. As you know, this document has 19 different rubrics, and I have sought to respond to all 19, and that's where you would put your ratings for that. This is a listing of the professional practice, the student learning, and the three district improvement goals, which are then supported by the other documents in the email. So I'll go to those. And the first one is the professional practice goal. You've seen these before, and it contains the goal itself, and in this particular instance, the documentation of the visitations to the schools over the course of January through The next goal is the student learning goal, and it has more listing of the action steps taken. It has to do with the student growth percentile, and the results are presented right here. So those are, I mean, there really wasn't anything more to say other than to report out how the district did. Then we get to the district improvement goal number one of three, and that's the institutional self-evaluation, where we're looking at equity in terms of academic courses chosen, in terms of extracurricular activities and athletics. And there's a relatively extensive narrative in this particular section, because there's a lot of data that we had to go through. The actual spreadsheets that have the data, however, are not in this particular file. The spreadsheets themselves are Excel spreadsheets that are part of this email and their attachments. If this is something that excites you and you want to look at them, these are the bases for the narrative that I just presented. If you do look at these, you probably want to scroll down until... Sorry for the delay. There are some charts and graphs, but it's the bottom of the data. Maybe it's because I blew it up, something? Let's try English Honors, try that one. Yeah, try getting to the bottom. Okay, there we go. So, for example, again, this is the, the narrative is really where you want to go. This is the backup data that we use as the reference. Here, we're looking at English Honors by subgroups. The percent of each subgroup, 82.8% of the students at GHS are white. And here, we see the number of students and the percentage of students that are enrolled in English Honors. And the reason that we did put this in the other documents is because of, there's so many tabs. There's about 15, 17 tabs for English, Math, Science, Social Studies, World Language, CVTE, and all the rest. So you have those backup though if you want to look at it. Then there is district improvement goal number two, which is discipline, not as long, and I think the discipline data, here's the goal itself, here's the narrative, and then there is, should be an appendix, and the appendix tells you that there's a school discipline review form, which we developed so that we can identify which groups, what suspensions, for what duration. You have to rotate it, unfortunately. And then, this is the data on discipline, but you should be able to rotate it when you look at it. And then the last is district improvement goal number three, which has to do with curriculum bias and stereotyping. And there are two documents, there's the goals, there's the narrative, and then the two documents that we've created, there's a PowerPoint training for teachers on how to look for stereotypes and for bias, and then there's an actual document that they can work with, which is the way in which they can examine, there's a model for the evaluation of biased content and instructional materials. So they will use this document as the template for how they will review their curriculum. Okay? What's the story?
Okay. So we will publicly evaluate the superintendent on January 9th. For me to compile a summative evaluation of all of your good work, you should get that to me by, sorry, the January 2nd. Any other questions on that?
When are we doing the night session?
The 9th.
We have to do it that Sunday?
What?
We have to do it on January 9th, Kim?
We're supposed to do it in December.
We're supposed to do it in December, but because of non-contract here, and because of the way it worked out, we only have one meeting in December, maybe since we actually talked about that. We will move on to superintendent's report.
Monday was interesting. I went to the superintendent's roundtable with Congressman Seth Moulton, about 25 or so superintendents. It was interesting, it was very nice to meet him. And before I turned around, it was over, his aides were saying, "We've got to go, we have to move on." So it was abbreviated, we only spent about an hour together, but he was in information gathering mode, which is good, and he was open-minded as well. Some of the issues that came up, he spoke briefly first, and a couple of things that he is interested in finding out about has to do with automation, how it's changing the world, how it's changing the future of work, and how is the educational system adapting. Those are very, very good questions. The second fundamental question that he asked about had to do with equality of opportunity as a core value, and that today, this is his, I'm paraphrasing his words, Congressman Moulton, "Education opportunities not equal, and oftentimes, it's designated by what zip code you live under." And he even made an illustration that even in the same zip code, depending on what part of town you live in, there are different opportunities. There was discussion about funding, a little bit about school safety as well. There's a supplemental bill regarding student safety, which has been reduced from $42 million to $5 million, and it's supposed to help schools deal with issues of student anxiety and mental health issues as well. The foundation budget came up, and the need to change the foundation budget, healthcare costs, special education costs, the extent to which health, ensure healthcare, special education, English language learning is economically disadvantaged, the way in which they are proportioned in the current foundation budget is just not adequate, and that point was brought forward. The congressman asked, "Why is special education cost, why are they rising so much and extending?" And there were a couple of people there who were able to speak about that, and the significant disabilities, the rise in autism, more preterm survival at a much higher rate, rapid increase in dyslexia. We know that there's been some new rules and regulations this year about dyslexia. There was some discussion about the circumstances that our kids are growing up under with trauma and homelessness, and how are we going to prepare these kids for the workforce for necessary training as they move forward. There was a statement that social welfare has, quote, "streamed" to the schools, along with the, again, the need to wrestle down healthcare costs. The congressman asked, "Would it be advantageous for there to be a statewide health plan for all teachers?" And the answer was immediate, and everybody said yes. A little talk about expansion of the Perkins Grant, and even a little conversation about expanding the school day and the school year. If we're going to meet the demands of future markets and the shifting and the adaptations that children need to be prepared to do as the economy shifts over time, do we have enough time within the somewhat industrial school day that we have now to really prepare them? And are we able to do it in a way that uses authentic project-based learning on an extended scale in order to prepare them to be able to make those shifts as the economy changes? So, and then it was whisked off and left a silver bullet, but it was interesting. We mentioned the GHS Essex Tech Local 22 pilot program. I just, as an update, Guidance Department has a list of students who are interested. They are in the process of modifying their student schedules so that all of their academics will take place, they'll have lunch, and then they'll bus over to Essex Tech. Local 22 has been working on the classroom that is adjacent to what was the culinary classroom, and they painted it, they cleaned it up, and now we're waiting to put a drop ceiling in. This minutia, minute details that are some complications. The drop ceiling guy took down the lights. The electrician doesn't want to put them up because of that, due to potential liability. So we're working with both the ceiling person, the electrician, and DPW to get these rather typical, crazy little minute details taken care of, so we get this thing done in place and set up in time for January. And also, the furniture for the classrooms already in the building, as preparations are being made as well. We had a meeting this morning, well, this afternoon, at 12:30, in anticipation of the meeting on December 17th regarding the fieldhouse floor. So the school committee chair, the principal of the high school, the athletic director, Joe Lucido from DPW, Doran Whittier, were there just taking some first looks at the fieldhouse and just getting a lay of the land, so to speak. so that they can come in on the seventeenth, which is next Monday. We have a meeting at one o'clock in the various office in order to talk about how do we move forward to get an estimate as to what's necessary to repair the fieldhouse floor. There was some conversation about the bleachers as well, by the way. And if you have bleachers that are not fully functional and you put down a new floor, that's a problem too. The, me, Brad Dora asked questions not just about the track or the floating court, but also some of those other ancillary areas, asking us to map out exactly how those are going to be used. Because that will help to determine its configuration, the kinds of materials that are used. We don't want them throwing shot puts on the basketball court as an exaggerated illustration.
Did you say the AD director was in that meeting too?
Yes. And he'll be with us on the seventeenth as well.
And we talked about having some other, you know, just a couple, few people that have been put into the actual use of gym, like track coach or, you know, basketball. So I don't know if the seventeenth is the right meeting, but...
I'm hoping, A, I agree, and B, I'm hoping that Mr. Lefata can bring that information in the knowledge that there should be some face-to-face conversations with the coaches as well. Because we saw that just the other day when they presented here, that they have insight into the concerns and conditions.
Do we know, are there any written requirements from like MIAA about a gym floor or anything? You know, is there?
Has to be, yeah.
Well, I mean, has to be there, but are there regulations for this, you know? Like, does the plywood have to be a certain inch underneath the floor that's plastic?
That's not AMIA's.
No.
Or anyone, or some sort of, maybe the disability.
But there, I mean, there are, I'm sure there are specs. He mentioned the company Hussey.
Yep.
Probably the...
Yeah, it's the bleacher company.
Right. Well, you know, obviously, this ad hoc group is going to make sure that this thing's done correctly. Gloucester has a mixed bag history of construction and quality of that construction. So it's really, it's incumbent to make sure that this thing is done well, done right, and also provides maximum service for the student athletes.
And do we know, is there a written document summary that demonstrates or shows the history of any repairs that have been done to the floor, things that have been attempted, but yet didn't work? I got a phone call from the city council the other day, evidently taking an interest in this topic. And he's like, "Why can't we just go put in a piece of plywood underneath? Did anybody try this, anybody try that?" And I was trying to assure him that the DPW's been working on this over a few years, and they tried different things. But I didn't know, and I didn't want to give him information that was incorrect. So I didn't know, do we have a written history of...
DPW, man, we don't.
DPW, okay, okay.
We don't.
You could ask him how many times, how long it takes to actually nail a cone over a very bad dent in the floor that the kids have to avoid.
But I did tell him to call the DPW, not me, because they would come to history. But I just didn't know if we had anything to show the intent to fix it, how long we've been trying to fix it, how much longer are we going to have to tolerate this type of situation?
We even took a walk into the ROTC room downstairs, and apparently there was a tunnel that was built in order to do some repairs. They took a flashlight look, which gives them some access to the underlayment, what the heck it looks like.
Scary.
And I'm confident that if it's going to get done, it's going to get done right.
Yeah.
Let's see, update, last item is the update on the next generation of science and test exam. They are, the Department of Ed is transitioning from the traditional assessments to the next generation assessments. In order to do that, they'll be administering the high school science, the new high school science test for the first time in the spring of two thousand and twenty. But it won't be before the class of two thousand and twenty-five. Once they establish the standards, they have to, as they've done before, they have to administer the test a couple of times. Classes of two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four. Two thousand and twenty-three is entering grade nine next year. So, you know, it will be fully implemented for the class of two thousand and twenty-five. But what they also want to do is reduce the number of science exams, chemistry in particular. And there's another one, the students are just not taking those tests in large numbers, and it's costly and ineffective. So the recommendation to the board by the commissioner is to phase out some of the science testing, possibly suggest others like computer science, and maintain that interim period whereby they administer the science assessments. And once they have a firm sense of performance established, then they'll hold classes accountable. So the take-home message is that the science and test exam is in transition, and we'll hear more about that later.
Okay, you missed the, you skipped over the K-Band Big Band.
Oh my goodness gracious. Yes, thank you so very, very much. Carlos Meneses, how do you pronounce the last name?
Meneses.
Meneses? Meneses, Carlos.
Carlos.
Carlos, Prince Carlos, perfect. He's a terrific musician, he's a great music director. His K-Band Big Band is coming back for the seventh annual Big Band Swing Show this coming Wednesday. I believe it begins at seven o'clock, I could be wrong on that. All proceeds go towards donations for accessing musical instruments for O'Malley children. And tickets at the door are twenty dollars, a discount of five dollars to all GPS staff and students. I've been there before, it's a great, great show, the O'Malley Jazz Band itself performs first. Some of those students play with the Big Band, the music is great, and it's a big time. You also have in your agenda a listing of all the other holiday concerts, such as the High Schools Concert, which is coming up this Friday, and a listing of everything else.
The questions of the superintendent?
And we'll get the superintendent's report second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pooed, yeah. We will move on to our committee reports. There's just the program subcommittee meeting on December sixth. And your person at the committee will report.
So we went through a long checklist of safety issues regarding the vocational program. I suggest you review it if you're interested in each particular item, but the majority are done. And the items that are not done are certainly in process and close to being resolved. So there's a lot of progress being made, both from facilities perspective and communication and kind of systematic teacher, what's expected in the classrooms to keep them safe and protocols and things like that. So everybody needs to have this. Is any review by B&amp;F contact facilities?
Well, it's, it's, it's appropriate because it's a lot of the report from the...
No, I understand, B&amp;F, you're talking about facilities and safety, it just needs to be at B&amp;F too.
Well, many of those things are on, come up. It'd be in a different form in work orders and, you know. So there's no overlap.
Yeah, we discussed many of those items under work orders.
Okay. As long as it's on some document somewhere, relevant files. And the second item, we went through a report on the educational and facilities considerations for the modules as it relates to class size and enrollment. After a long and, I think, a really good discussion around some of the issues and items and things that were brought up, that, you know, there's things like the age of modules of the UN as it relates to the age of modules, and use of modules of COE, and all this. I think everybody got this as part of communication to the entire committee. And frankly, from our, we kind of finished the discussion, saying, "There is really no positive educational reason to do this." And it would, but it was worthwhile to have the discussion as a contingency perspective and to present it to B&amp;F for that particular thing because it would need to be quantified and monitored from a cost perspective relative to, you know, when you save, or what is it going to cost to continue with the modules and keeping them maintained and all that as they move on in their useful life? And also the opposite, which is if you actually got rid of what other services and staff would you need, and what implications does that have on the other facilities if we somehow had to switch kits somewhere else? So there's implications more from a financial perspective, but also from just making sure we're planning and hopefully encouraging DPW to do all they can to keep them going as long as they need to be going, particularly in like that we're doing East Gloucester School and the combination of veterans. That will give us more clarity on the future as it relates to both B&amp;F and COE ultimate solution. So, anything else?
I'd just like to say the report, only taking into consideration of moving students to Plum Coe and West Parish because of the fact that MSBA, where East Gloucester Veterans are firmly under MSBA's watchful eye, and for us to talk about putting more kids in there would be a violation of their agreement with us. But it was pretty much the consensus of the committee that when the East Gloucester Vets building becomes available to take some of the surplus, it's a whole different story than it is trying to put on Coe and B&amp;F and West Parish. So keep an eye on it. And the idea of sending it to B&amp;F was to get information from DPW about their true assessment of their, the life expectancy of these modules and the cost to maintain them for, until we are in a position to have a new school and relieve some of the pressure.
And with the committee's permission, Gary and I would like to take that update to our bi-weekly meeting with DPW to at least begin to have that conversation again with the possible expectation that B&amp;F may want someone from DPW to come and report as well.
Will that be in time for the next B&amp;F next week?
Is, do we need to ask you?
Yes, so we can...
Yes, maybe yes.
We can find out some information on a full, pardon?
Not a full report, you'll be able to assess. Overdue.
Wedge it down to start this process. Right. Additional information.
I think we also, there's a very thorough assessment of what these modules are being used for. And I think if anybody's gone into B&amp;F or even East Gloucester, you can tell that many of these rooms are multipurpose to an extreme. And, you know, they compromise things like providing services. They're doing different groups, but they're also doing services elsewhere. So the idea that we can just shift a bunch of kids and kind of just think as a classroom implication versus all the multiple services kids get in a building, it would strain other schools as well. So we just need to be really, like, this is kind of the last thing that we'd have to be... There'd have to be a reason, because there's really no good reason we would do it unless you had to do it. So that's the report, in purpose.
Okay. We'll, the first one is the second reading of security cameras in schools and buses policy file, ECAF. Because at last meeting, we waived the actual reading of the policy. But I, unless the committee did differently, I think we probably should read it for the sake of the television audience. Because a lot of the concern about this policy is that parents understand it. So, does anybody object to our reading of the policy into the record?
That's all, let's read it.
Who's going to read it?
I'll read it.
I'll read it.
Was it, no, I must object, but was it put on the website? Last time we said that we were having on the website, that's why we got around reading it last time.
It's in the packet, correct?
It is in the packet.
So MIAC would tell you, we're a body that does business in public, not a body that does business for the public. Not that I'm saying I don't want to read it, but it is in our, minutes it is in our packet. But if someone wants to read it, that's okay. And actually, after we do read it, I'm going to ask that we waive the third reading if there's no changes, which we would need to waive the policy, the surveying of the readings.
And that means that I have no objection to reading it to the record.
Like I said, it's really only for those of David's audience, of his faithful followers. Obviously, anybody who's getting their information from the... But, you know, people do watch it, and I do believe that the, some people in the newspaper business do rely on their, what's going on in the school committee by watching the...
Mr. Chairman, regretfully, I don't regretfully, but may I request you please read it? Because we've been done with it now.
Okay.
Respectfully.
File ECAF, security cameras in schools and buses. The school committee works to maintain a safe and secure environment for its students, staff, visitors, and facilities. Security means more than having locks and making certain the doors are locked at the proper times. Security also means minimizing fire hazards, reducing the possibility of faulty equipment, keeping records and values in a safe place, protection against vandalism and burglary, the prosecution of vandals, the developing crisis plan, and developing crisis plan. It also includes monitoring to ensure the safe transportation of students to and from the school. School facilities and not their contents constitute one of the greatest investments of the community. The school committee believes it to be in the best interest of students and taxpayers for the district to exert every reasonable means to protect the investment adequately. In pursuit of this objective, the school committee authorizes the use of security cameras in school district buildings on its property and on school buses to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of all students, staff, and visitors to deter theft, vandalism, and other negative behaviors such as bullying, verbal or physical conflict, to safeguard district buildings, buses, grounds, and equipment, and to monitor unauthorized individuals in or on school property. Security cameras may be used in locations as deemed appropriate by the superintendent of schools in consultation with school officials as well as local law enforcement and emergency response agencies. They may be used in any area inside or outside of school buildings, on school buses, and/or where there is no reasonable expectation for privacy. The district will shall notify students and staff through student and employee handbooks and appropriate signage that security cameras or, in the case of buses, audio and video equipment have been installed and may be used at any time. Security camera footage and, in the case of school buses, audio recordings may be used to assist in the resolution of a complaint or conflict involved in students and/or staff. The superintendent shall ensure that proper procedures are in place and are followed regarding the use, viewing, disclosure, retention, disposal, and security of video recordings or photographs from security cameras in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. A video recording and, in the case of buses, audio and video recordings used for security purposes of school district buildings and/or the school property or on school buses shall be the sole property of the school district. All video recordings will be stored in their original format and secured to avoid tampering and to ensure confidentiality in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Access to video recordings from security cameras shall be limited to school administrators, superintendent, that's slash designated, school principal slash designated. Law enforcement and emergency response officials shall be granted access... Law enforcement and emergency response officials shall be granted access to video recordings or the security system after giving proper notice to the school superintendent slash designated. A review of video slash audio recordings to comply with all applicable state and federal laws and the state and school committee policy requests for the review of video/audio records that are not considered educational records will be reviewed by and granted within the discretion of the superintendent, consistent with state and federal law. All requests for the review of video/audio recordings that are considered educational records will be treated as follows. Video/audio recordings will be stored in the short term. All viewing and listening requests must be submitted in writing. Requesters name of the student, date of the incident, reason for the request to the superintendent within five days, five school days of the date of the recording. This timeframe could be waived at the discretion of the superintendent. Requests for viewing and listening will be limited to those, parents, guardians and students with a direct interest in the proceedings and only the portion of the video/audio recording record concerning the specific, related specific incident will be made available for review. Approval of denial or for viewing will be made within five school days of receipt of the request and so communicated to the requesting individual by the superintendent or his/her designated. All viewing will conclude the building principal and/or his/her designated and will take place in the school administrative offices. A written log including the date of viewing, reasons for viewing, the date of recording was made and the signature of the viewer will be maintained for any person viewing audio or video or audio records. Video records will remain the property of the district and may be reproduced only in accordance with the law, including applicable school committee policy and negotiations. The superintendent may from time to time issue further guidance that is consistent with current law and this policy. So do we have a motion to accept this as the second reading?
Second.
Is there any discussion? See, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Yeah, I'd like to see if the committee is willing to entertain having a third reading, knowing that we haven't had any changes between the first to the second. I think also time-wise, if we can get this approved and maybe get it up on the website saying that it is approved policy, it gives us a little bit of time, because it's my understanding this isn't going into effect until January, the audio part of it.
The security on the buses, the year list we do obviously would be January.
Right.
As soon as the technology piece is ready to go. If the policy stuff is in place, then we'll begin.
And I think this will give us a little bit of time to have feedback from parents, knowing it is an approved policy as opposed to waiting until January to approve it and then having it going right into effect. I think that the month time in between will give a good time for feedback. They can post it on the website, they can put it in our minutes that we already have and get the word out there, call the newspaper, invite them in, tell them what's going on, whatever we need to do, but that way we can deal with any issues that may come forward before the audio part goes into effect. So that being said, to do that, we would have to waive our policy that says we have to do three readings. So I'd like to do a motion that we waive the policy that states the school committee has to do three readings to approve a policy.
Second.
Any discussion?
We have to do three. I thought it was one, two readings.
Two, three?
No, I think it's two.
I was under the impression it was two.
Yeah, it's two.
Oh, it is two? Okay. I'm checking three, so I might be.
Yeah, no, it's two.
I think it's two.
Yeah.
Can we find out, just in case? You don't have to make a move?
We've never done any more than two ever, ever since.
Really? Okay. I've always known it to be three, so.
Yeah, it's always been two.
Do you, I'll take back the motion, we don't need it. Do you have the comments?
We don't need it.
I thought, my experience is that we've done two.
Okay. Oh, great, then we don't have to do it.
Oh, I think they.
Why are the school committee here to do three? And I always thought this one was three too, so.
It's always been two.
And if it's just an amendment, we just do one.
So we must approve the policy?
Second.
No, we already did.
We already did.
By approving the second reading or approving the policy?
So you all in favor of that?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
It's already decided.
Yeah, we didn't already know. I'm sorry.
It's catchy, whatever you've got.
As long as it's approved.
Okay, moving on to, continuing in that action. The second one is the school resource officer special budgetary transfer in the amount of $60,000. This, we budget the school resource officer, but the school resource officer is actually paid of the police department. So just as a means of ensuring that it happens, that it's in our budget, but we transfer it to the city for the purpose of paying officers.
I move that we approve the resource officer special budgetary transfer in the amount of $60,000. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Grants. The first one is the Energy North Inc. grant in the amount of $500 to GHS. Well, this came up before us last week or two weeks ago and I asked for it to be tabled until we were able to get some more information about advertising in schools. And what I'm passing out right now is our policy. And our policy says, the first bullet point in our policy is, building and finance subcommittee shall review requests for advertising and make a recommendation to the full school committee. Now, because this grant requires that we advertise in the school, I would like to refer this to B and F, allowing to come back with a recommendation whether we allow it or not.
Right.
Can I just ask a question on that? You may not know the answer. What is the standard going to be? If we're going to refer every potential advertising grant to B and F, what is your standard going to be so they can treat each one consistently and fairly as opposed to?
Guidelines for advertising.
These are the guidelines for advertising. These have been in place since the state actually allowed us to put advertising fields and buses. Now, the only place that this ever really comes up is on the fields. Where we allow different organizations to sell advertising at the ball fields and at the, the ring, the ring's not as anymore, it used to be the ring. It's just the ball fields. And that is reviewed, those reviewed by B and F.
But those are solely advertising. This is an acknowledgement of a grant. It's a little bit different and it's different in some ways, but it's not in others, because this is a for-profit, it's not a non-for-profit. So when we get a grant from mass, you know, life sciences, that's a nonprofit organization. They want acknowledgement, they want the publicity that they've given the grant, but they're a nonprofit, so.
Does anybody have to be put posters up?
Well, there's, you know.
Sometimes there are. Well, I don't know. I know what you're saying, it's like this is a demand versus that is kind of.
It's a couple of hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know, there's a section, this last section is agreements between the district and supporting organizations and their body sponsors may include. And there's a whole lot of guidelines here, which, you know, it is, you know, basically to deal with the different, you know, nonprofits.
So it's referred to B and F?
It's referred to B and F and that's when they'll have that discussion about where do we draw the line?
Can I take this a little bit further for the referral to B and F that Dr. Sapphire reach out to other schools that have vocational programs in there to see what type of advertising, if any, that they do in their programs? Because it's my experience that a lot of vocational programs do have the advertising and I just want to make sure that's part of the conversation. I'm not saying which ones are right and which ones are wrong, or maybe none is right and none is wrong, but I just think to find out what other schools do would be helpful.
Would anyone know if, for example, Essex Tech's school committee has a policy on advertising?
We advertise. I mean, there's names everywhere. But I'm talking like the Shova or any other schools too, just to see that maybe Essex Tech is the only one we either know, but I just would want to, wouldn't want to lose out on money if businesses were willing to come in, even if it meant putting their neighborhood up there that students are usually familiar with regardless of whether they're in the school or on the advertising when they walk out the door. I wouldn't want to lose any money if we're going to start accepting donations with advertising. But that's a decision that has to be made.
I mean, we, as far as nonprofits go, I mean, we advertise nonprofits. I mean, there's education foundation posters at every school, you know, I mean, and, you know, that's a partnership that we have that is long and fruitful and there's no reason why we would not want to do that, that I can imagine. So it's different when people are not looking to capitalize on their activists trying to help.
Help, yeah, exactly.
So we'll give that to B and F. We have two DESE grants, entitlements, DESE FY 18 Title I grant in the amount of $3,398.
Do you want to be accepted? Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The second one is the DESE FY 18 Title II A grant in the amount of $504. I put my glasses on.
I need to be accepted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, Massachusetts School Building Authority update. The, we just recently, as of today, signed the final papers on West Parish. So that will trigger the final reimbursements, that's what we use.
Let's check over before the board in February. That's what I think.
Okay. But we have signed off on this school. East Gloucester, we met last week, the design team from Doran Widdier came and presented. They were still in contract negotiations at that point. They explained their financial end of the contract, which I will say is very favorable to the city mainly because they're willing to work very cheap in the hopes that they get the big job. The timeline, and they went through a timeline of when they would hope to be able to produce the deliverables. And right now, it would be looking at, I can't remember if we want to go through that sort of stages, but essentially we, they have to do a certain amount of information gathering. The MSBA requires that they look at East Gloucester School to just repair it, to repair and add on to it or to.
Renovate.
Renovate, well, I guess it's renovate and add on to it and then build on that site. So they have to do all this work, which, you know, we had a long discussion today with MSBA about, you know, how much time that we should put in, they should put into these things because they're not viable, you know? Some of them are definitely not viable, like the one we would just repair, the existing building. But they do require that and MSBA basically said that, you know, because of, they're dealing with different communities, they want to make sure that they, every answer, they have an answer to every question. The question of why don't you just fix up the old school always comes up. So we came to a contract settlement with Doran Widdier. We met today with MSBA at East Gloucester School for the kickoff meeting. Basically, MSBA came and pretty much just laid out the timeline and what the deliverables were and they took a tour of the school. They, we did a drive-by of veterans, we took a look at Green Street and then they took a tour of West Parish because they haven't seen it. So that was a long, long day.
Did they find parking?
What?
Did they find parking?
Quite, at East Gloucester?
No, at West Parish.
Oh, West Parish, yeah. There's plenty of parking there if nothing's going on. I counted 16 empty spots during the day. We didn't talk about parking. We tried to get them to look at the buses coming to East Gloucester, we were there right as a dismissal, but they were chatting, somebody was had their ear chatting, so they never got to see the bus. What else? That's about it, MSBA. We have, the next building committee meeting will be on the first week in January.
So I have a question. At the end of that meeting, last meeting was in this room, someone mentioned if certain sites get taken off the maybe list, that's work they don't have to do, is that something that the building committee is able to eliminate on its own? If they were sites originally recommended by the school committee, does the building committee authority, the last time, get involved to say, okay, please only look at this narrowed list? Or does it come back out to us to refer the building committee?
What happened with the building committee previously is that the Green Street site became sort of the preferred site, but we didn't take anything really off, but the idea is to live at Green Street and if for some reason that doesn't work, we go someplace else.
So the MSBA is not going to have Doran Widdier spending money looking at Harrison Hough unwager? The school committee don't even do anything to take that off?
No, no, we don't have to do anything to take it off. They have looked at all the sites and they have indicated that Green Street is, will be the most desirable and economic spot.
So the only other thing I kind of wanted to say at the school committee level is hopefully that the building committee, that the school committee should also, I always get nervous when municipalities get cozy with companies that become the go-to, there are others that the city uses for other things that I feel the relationship is so strong, they feel like, well, you know, what's Gloucester going to do, not use us, right? We're not, we're no longer someone that's, we're actively being targeted by these committees. I'm not saying Doran Widdier has done anything to suggest that they are having, taking this attitude, but just because they are now so intertwined with the city and have kind of become over the last four or five years, the go-to, they're doing the citywide facility study, they're going to look separately at the Field House, they just did West Parish, now they're most likely going to be doing East Gloucester Vets, at least the design of it and not the build of it also. The one little thing that I noticed at the building committee was that Doran Widdier, their timeline was four months longer than what the consultants that we have hired.
Party manager.
Party manager said, this is how long it should take to take this step. And Doran Widdier came and said, well, it's going to take us four months longer. And the, that just kind of was like, oh, they explained why it was going to take four months longer, it seemed legitimate, but that was one of those kinds of reasons I find, like, oh, is that because they know Gloucester will tolerate because we have such a relationship with them or is that because, you know, it really is four months longer? And I won't suggest that it was anything but, it really will take four months longer, but just something that beginning of a long process for a vendor now who was really closely along with the city.
I think it's more a case of me sitting and saying, gee, Joel, you can do this job in a couple of weeks and you saying, no, it's going to take me two months. I mean, it's, but when the person who's got to do the job is telling you how long it's going to take is a lot more.
But with building cabinets, you said, Joel, you should still have these three cabinets built in two weeks. And I said, no, it's going to take me two months. You go, I know how to build cabinets, it's all two weeks, right?
Well, I'm just saying the other people that know how long it's going to take. The timeline right now, it would be that we would be going, we would be submitting our preferred schematic design. our preferred schematic design to MSBA for their April 2020 meeting. So that is
Long time, it's a long time.
Well, it's a year and four months.
That's a long time.
Can I ask a quick, did I miss something? Was there like a whole bunch of architects bidding for this job?
No, there were two.
Oh, there was two.
That's odd.
The, the, that timeline is, is, the, the idea is that the school, the timeline includes opening the school in September 2023.
Which?
Two thousand twenty thousand. So, which will just fit in nicely to our 400th anniversary.
Oh my God, that's too many.
The module was last.
If the module was last, you have to see other pieces. So that's MSBA. We have the holiday calendar events. I urge you to, if you have any time to go to any of these, to do that. There was something else. We have received a letter from students asking us about response to our, the school store, and the issue here is that our wellness policy basically says that they shouldn't be doing this. So it would require for us to allow them to do it. The superintendent and the principal have told them that they're not gonna do it. They felt that coming to the school committee would, we do have the power to override that, but I believe that what we need to do is send the, well, if, if we want to waive our own policy, we have to go to the program to determine. We talked about it a number of times. We talked about it last year when the students came in and asked to, to re-old the school store. It was determined at that time that they, we would allow them to do it for the rest of that year, but that was gonna be it because it flies in the face of our wellness policy. Then the students came in and asked again for this year. Now, it's a fundraiser, and as you heard tonight, they have a number of fundraisers. They have a number of different sources for raising funds to, to basically pay for their senior year expenses. So if, I'm just saying, I don't think this should be taken up quite full committee, if that needs to go to program, if they want to talk about waiving our, our policy, but we are, we instruct the student, the administration to enact our policies. So
I thought we had done that with this.
They did.
I thought we had done that with this. Superintendent was supposed to review those days, and we were like, yeah, but I thought it was already written.
The, the, the policy says it shouldn't happen.
I know, but I thought we had already overridden that.
We did, yeah.
Look, that was last year.
No.
That was last September.
No, we, we
We just asked to look at the dates, and they submitted
We requested September.
They came to us this past September.
The date.
They had the dates, and we left it up to Sup, Sapphire, Dr. Sapphire, to make a decision on the dates. And now we're telling them, no, now you're gonna come back to the committee to request waiver of the policy.
We're not telling them no. He's looking at our policy and saying no.
I know, but he's saying no, exactly. That's what I mean. He's going by policy.
Well, he's adhering to the policy because that's my job.
No, 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 I'm not.
But this isn't the policy that, there's a policy that says that the superintendent from time to time can make exception. It's not this policy. It's a different piece of stuff.
Well, there's also a plan. There's the wellness plan, which is, is attached to that, and if you wanna go online and see it, I believe it's, it's, and we had, the wellness plan was developed by the wellness committee, which we had representation on.
Joel, so my recollection as it left the subcommittee and then went through the full committee last year was that because the senior class last year hadn't received adequate warning, we said, okay, as a courtesy, this is open back as, I'm a fan of the concept of the school store, and the policy only restricts it about the time of day, probably can't be during lunch. And they, so they were saying, one of the complaints last year was that, well, we've tried to do it after school, but it doesn't work well, and that makes sense at lunch, everyone's flowing to and from the school store, so there's your, your, your chance to go, no one walks by that on the way out the door. I believe, at least at the subcommittee, I don't know if it was brought up at the full committee, we talked about the potential that the area in the atrium that has that kind of desk out there now could be a potential new site for a school store that could be staffed during hours where they're not in conflict with the policy. And I don't know if that was ever communicated out to students that was ever reviewed by Principal Cook as a good or bad idea, to have, you know, that seemed to be the way to stay within the policy, was that, it's not that you can't ever sell, you just can't be selling it during lunch. If you're not selling it during lunch, your school store location isn't a bad location to actually capture people. And so I don't know if it's through Dr. Sapphire, the principal, whatever it is, if that's something that is deemed advisable, that may be a suggestion to this current class of, listen, if you wanna sell from 2:07 until 2:27 from the atrium, when everyone's flowing past you, because even those who use the, the door out to the lighting room, they still come down those blue stairs, and they're 10 feet from, they're not walking past, but it's a 10-feet deep, foot detour for them to go left, grab some, you know, chips or whatever, and then head down to the parking lot. That, you know, that might be something to say, you can do that five days a week if you want, like the old school stories, came in that little cubby during lunch selling stuff.
Hey, I also remember, Jonathan?
Yeah.
I also remember during the discussions with the students at the program subcommittee, when we decided to send it to full committee to let them do it till the end of the year, but we also talked about having to possibly raise the students' fees for the school year. I don't know if that was done.
There's been no, to my knowledge, there's been no conversation. Students, their fees just as factual as, as $25 per year for four years.
For four years.
And what they currently have in their account is $16,504.77.
And that is to help them with their prom expenses, their, you know, all the dances and everything they go through. So I think this whole matter of them saying we don't have enough money fundraising, you know, is a little bit disingenuous maybe. I don't know, I don't know how to say it, but I do think there are other ways for them to raise money, and I definitely like Joel's idea, but I, I think that we still need to look at the raising class fees, because they haven't been raised in
For that year, just a decade.
A decade. So I think that should be something that needs to be considered, so that they have enough money to help pay for their activities in the senior year. And I don't think it should just be because school, you know, just be that they have to have school store.
So, do we know what fees are in other school districts? Are we consistent?
I think
I know the kids do it.
Hold, 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 it's not a fee. It's, it's dues, and what they pay is determined by themselves.
Right.
They don't, we don't, we don't authorize this. This is what the school, the, the class is, the class
I understand that, but if they're asking us
They're asking us.
For us to make money, I would like to know as part of that decision, are our, is their dues consistent with other schools? In other words, do other schools pay 35 as opposed to 25?
Right.
And maybe they can consider that as opposed to coming to us to consider changing our policy. So this is kind of information I think we need as a committee, because you wanna help students, we all do. We want them to make money. Like Jonathan Ho said, we have to be fiscally responsible in our food service department. You know, we have wellness policy we're supposed to adhere to. So we have all these desires to be in compliance and help people, but yet they're conflicting with each other, so maybe there's a different solution that we can help them with, or help them come to terms with, and maybe it means educating us to educate them, and that's why I ask, is the dues the same? Have them give us a list of all the fundraisers that they do, and show us the money they're making to see, okay. Maybe you're picking too expensive of a prom location or a, a dance location, and you can do it financially responsible in a better way or whatever. So I think these are the kind of conversations that need to take place, as opposed to us looking like the bad guy, that we're not letting our students make money off a school store when other schools do it. So we need to come full circle and have a full understanding that we're making good decisions, they're not understanding, they're requesting things we wanna help them with, but we can't change what we're doing, otherwise we're not in compliance with our policy. So how do we, how do we come together? Kumbaya.
Well, I'll go back to my original thing. I think we should refer this to program to, to adjudge all of those discussions.
Well, it's a financial thing, and whether it be bringing up finance and how it's in conflict with the food service making money, I would wanna know financially, are we saving money by doing this? Are, is there a cost benefit to not having the school store open? That's a financial investigation.
Yeah.
In other words, last year at this time, compared to this year at this time, when school was open versus closed, what's the income difference, or what's the debt difference?
I always looked at last
We're already, right, well, programs are
They said they passed
I thought they did last year, and it's been
They, they, they did last year, I, my recollection is they gave up $7,000 over the whole year.
They, the class, the previous class, not last year's class, but the previous class.
Last year's class got stopped in October and came back up in early spring, I think.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the things in that letter that made me empathize a little bit is that there are classes that wants everybody to be included, and we also have to remember, we are a district with 44%, you know, free and reduced lunch. So I agree that one avenue is them raising their class dues, but they're also sensitive to how many of those kids can actually take care of that increase, as well as take care of the cost of going to events. So they're trying, I think, to be helpful to offset the cost for a lot of other kids.
So in the city's budget, we do, they, we do things where taxpayers help senior citizens that can't afford things. So what do we do as a school system to help students when they can't afford things? Do we have a, a means or an opportunity for a student to come forward to say
I can give you a full report, but there are instances where fees are waived within our athletic policy.
No, I didn't say that, but I mean for dances and proms. I mean, I don't wanna hear a student can't go to a prom because they can't afford it, you know? I mean, is there a way for the school district to assist with something? I don't know, I'm asking.
Allow me to speak with the high school, find out what they, what their practice has been, so I can report that back to you.
Because if we, if they can't afford the dues because we have so many low income, then what can we do? Is there a portion of our school committee contingency account that we can put into or house somewhere for people to apply, like they do the athletics? I mean, proms and athletics to me are just as important.
But just, just keep in mind that the, the cost to go into the prom, the, the ticket is the least expensive.
The what?
It's the ticket. They were just talking about the dress and the
Well, they have all kinds of agencies now. Well, there's all kinds of dress and things out there now to help situations like this, so maybe the school needs to work with those type of agencies, and if we're that low income, then let's bring in a system to help the kids.
I'm just saying, get, take that into consideration, that, that's not the big expense.
Anyway, I personally would love for the superintendent and the principal to
Figure it out.
Have a really good discussion with the kids about, like, come up with some good, you know, pass on the idea that we had last year of the location of the store, and, and talk about compromise, and talk about how, you know, I believe in some other connected policy, it says that there are, from time to time, there can be, there can be exceptions.
Joel James, well, if you can ask James, he did fine.
So the rule of the committee is to not review potential waiving policy, right?
Right.
I think we need to get a better understanding of the situation as a whole.
I thought that in September, the rule of the committee was to let them open the store on those days.
I did too.
Yeah.
I did too.
That's what
Well, on some of those days.
And that we left it up to him to decide which dates those were gonna be
He was supposed to vote on what the students, which dates?
Yeah.
And that was it. I thought that we had already
Me too.
We had done that.
I don't, I don't think that
I don't think that we took a vote.
No, we didn't take it over.
No, but it was
I passed it over.
I don't, I don't recall us having an instruction even that we, that we were in favor of. I thought we just kinda said, it's up to Dr. Sapphire. He's, as he said, doing his job, following the policy, and the policy says, no.
Back meeting of, now to September 29th, he's in up to five minutes.
But why would we refer to Dr. Sapphire, him to say no, when they were here, and we were already telling him, no, that the policy says that you can't? So I called Chairman Pope right after I saw your response, because I'm like, wait a minute, we're spinning circles here. They were just here asking, now we're telling them to come back and ask us again, when we left it up to the superintendent to determine how many days of the days he requested that they could have.
And leaving it up to me to determine that I had to violate the school committee policy.
But I thought, like Tony said, the consensus was, we were saying, come up with some days.
I need some more follow-up.
Okay.
I love the school store, but I don't recall that, you know, me either. I'm the first one to, to ask for it, but I don't think that was what happened.
That was my complete recollection. I think having them come back to us is spin circles. We're just going like this. We're thinking it's him, he's
Let's, wanna change the entire policy.
So, so
We can waive the policy.
Do, do we at least agree that, short of us waiving the policy, as Dr. Sapphire said, he is not in a position to approve these dates? We may have been, we may have left before we looked as far as saying, oh, Dr. Sapphire figured it out. Sounds like we either need to open up the policy to give him that discretion, then send it back to him, or if our answer is to send it to him, then he's kinda stuck with the answer the policy dictates, right? So has, I'm saying, I don't think from this point we can send it to him again, say, okay, Dr. Sapphire, you've heard we like the school store, please find some dates. I think he's still in the same position of, that sounds great, guys, but until you take a vote to waive this policy, I'm stuck.
I think we do what Kathy said, and have, have the superintendent and the principals have conversations with the kids to get a better understanding both ways, and then we pull it back to us. And if they still think after that conversation that they didn't make any headway or get good suggestions, then maybe come back to us, and we know a different path to follow, a right procedure to follow, to get a response that all of us can vote on.
We would like you to come to some compromise that we can then consider.
Unless the policy changes.
Well, you can only go by the policy.
But I'll compromise if, if, you know, Joel's idea, for example, it's, it works within the framework of what the policy states. If they want to sell whatever they choose to sell, and it's not during breakfast and lunch, I have no problem with that. If they say they wanna sell during lunch, lunch, I, you know, you're
But that's what you come back to us with, and then we have a conversation, we figure out what to do. If after a conversation of giving them other ideas and other possibilities, if they're that persistent that they're not gonna survive the year without any additional income, and we can't come up with a different way for them to help them, then bring it back to us, and we know we need to change the policy, waive the policy, make special circumstances, maybe not do anything, I don't know. Or say no, exactly. But right now, I think we're in different pages and different minds here. We need to get on one. And we need more information from the students to find out why this particular fundraising is the most important, as opposed to come out with other ideas.
I also think it's important to happen quickly, because the months are going by, and they did submit their request.
Joel, just, but the last thing I would say is that one of the reasons I like the idea of a school store that somehow can work is that it's not just about the money they make. I think there are valuable skills learned by having to manage a business, even if it's a small, short-term business. There's staffing issues, there's supply issues, there's money needs. I think, I think that, I think it's a valid thing, that even though, you know, not running a storefront, really, the school store is still, there's little kernels of experience they get out of this. So I think beyond fundraising opportunities, there's also other programmatic opportunities where the kids do this, if you find a way to work with them in the policy.
But that's where too, where I would want more information, if we're gonna go in that direction, I would want more information from finance on what the actual loss to the district is in the food service department.
Right.
Can we provide some information on that last
Yeah, we'll do it completely.
But now we have, we have a set of machines, is that?
Yeah.
That was different from before?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not really apples and apples.
Okay. So are we clear?
I think the message I got is for James and I to sit down with students and look at some form of compromise, identify from them what alternatives, such as some of the fundraising that Ms. Spencer mentioned today, and see if we can come to some sort of agreement.
Everybody happy with that? Okay, we are going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing ongoing grievances and as well as ratifications
Yes.
of the
Yes.
Second.
Who made a motion?
Several. Second, thank you.
Tony said yes, Chairman Pope?
Yes.
This week?
Yes.
We will come back into session and vote for contract in public, but it will be
Sorry, Joel.
Yes.
Okay, we will
We are coming out to
I just said that. We will recess for five minutes.